This conference will now be recorded.
Check one, two. Check. Check one, two.
If you would please, as able, if you could stand and pray with me, we'll have our invocation. Dear Lord and Father of all, we come to you this evening to ask your guidance as the mayor, administrators, staff, and city council meet to make those important decisions for the betterment of our community and its people. We are thankful for all of our council members who volunteer to serve their fellow citizens. We would also ask your protection for all our first responders, police, fire, hospital, ambulance, all the EMTs and healthcare workers who risk their well-being for ours. Tonight also, we would like to welcome the DARE group, Bob Heller, and they have done so much during so many years and here at council meeting this evening. We also ask your blessing for all our country and remember all of those who fought and died to create and sustain it for all its 240-plus years, many of whom paid the ultimate price for their service. We are now in the springtime, renewal, when winter gives way to a new season of blossoms and the trees are leaving out. Let us use this time to commit ourselves, if we will, we can, to make this year of 2021 a better year for our fellow men. And now, when we leave this evening and leave this chamber, we ask your protection for us and our loved ones until we meet again. All this, we pray in the name of your risen Lord, our Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Bob Heller, would you come forward, please? Bob had, just their group had a great car show on Saturday on this campus. I mean, it was probably the biggest show that we've ever had on this, with this group. Had some great cars, Bob's been a great guy. Raise the bucket, pull the money.
Thanks for accepting me in here tonight on such short notice, but usually, we're three or four days getting people in, picking up their auction items. This year, we only had one mat that wasn't picked up. I went ahead and paid the money so I could get my book closed, the guy that owes it. You all know him, Mark Allen. He's good for it, you know, he's just been busy. He was gonna try to get by yesterday, but he was doing with family as he should have been. This is my 30th year doing this car show. I have been a supporter for DARE for 31 years. That's longer than any of our DARE officers. I started with Cindy. She, I watched my daughter graduate from DARE, and Cindy said, "Well, I don't know how long we're gonna be able to keep this program going because we get no city funding, we get no state funding, we get no federal funding. It's gonna be what we can do." I started a program with my race car when I was racing it. When they dropped my class, I moved up in the class of cars. When they quit racing at Sedalia, I continued to race all around, supporting what I could with the race car. Then, in 2008, I decided to retire from racing. I wanted to build a T-bucket. I couldn't get my car sold. So I laughingly said one morning, practice out, I said, "I think I'll make my car into a two-seater and make it street legal." And all my racing buddies laughed at me, said, "You might make it, you might make it a two-seater, but there's no way in hell you're gonna get it street legal." Well, seven months later, I took it to the state of Missouri. The same ticket to the friend, and he passes it. I had to take it to Jim White, and he called in another officer. They inspect a car at the fairgrounds every half hour, and I blew his schedule clean out of the water. Those two guys tried their best to fail that car for two and a half hours and gave up. Their exact words were, "This car's gotta be safer than any T-bucket on the street." I've been to St. Louis around Busch Stadium with it. Five years in a row, I took it to the Wasota 100 in Huron, South Dakota, which, the first weekend in June, it's going back up there. I have one strict rule. Wherever I raise the money, that's where it stays. I will tell you, we kinda sit down, our computer blew up, so I kinda lost some of my figures, but we kinda, that car, since I've been doing DARE and doing other things, like, two weekends ago or three weekends ago, we were down at Jeff City at the mall, raising funds for the Honor Flight, okay? All the charity things we've done with that car, that car has raised over $375,000. Most of it for the Sedalia DARE. That's why we have two scholarships, that's why we have the number-one DARE program in the state of Missouri. We're also ranking the top three in the nation. You all can be very proud of that. What I'm, I'm gonna say to you all, and our officers are also a very big part of this, but I will say, what I'm gonna say to all of you, and I always brag about this, you as a council, whether you're beginning or the end, you're still the council, you all have never had to appropriate $1 to this program because of that old race car. So when you see it going down the street, you can wave, and I'll wave back. We had a, we had a great show, and if you missed it, you missed out, that's all I can say. John, you picked a very nice car. He picked Mike McDermott's 50 Mercury Low Rider, kind of a California custom. What's cool about that car is Mike McDermott built it. Plant manager, Duke Manufacturing, he built that car from the frame up. I went over and helped him do a little bit of wiring, but that's a Neo car, chopped top, the whole works. I built three trophies for my grandsons, 'cause I knew they would never agree on something. I was amazed, these boys, they're 14, 12, and eight. The cars they picked, all three of them, were 60 muscle cars. 69 Mach 1, or, no, I'm sorry, 69 Passback Mustang. A 69 Camaro C28, that was Daniel Desmond's. You all know Jim Desmond, he was a DARE officer. Daniel used to be on my pit crew when he was 13 years old, all the way until he graduated from high school. He also played ball for me in Little League. He was my catcher. And then, the third car they picked was a 64 Chevelle Malibu, so they got good taste. Pretty proud of them. We ended up with 151 cars. This lot was packed. The street was full, and that parking lot was done. I mean, that's pretty cool. Mark, Mark and my crew, my volunteers, they cooked 452 hot dogs. We gave away 450 bags of potato chips. We gave away 28 cases or 1,120 bottles of water. We also gave away 27 cases or 678 cans of soda. All that is donated by businesses in this community. We have no expense. We're not gonna raise what we raise and then say, "Well, I got, I got $13,000, I gotta pay them expenses." Every penny tonight will go to this program. And, you know, I've probably taken up more of my time, and I've probably spoken more than I ever have up here about this, but I'm proud of it. I kept my composure. We dedicated the show to Ron Bisfield, Cindy Weaver, and my guardian dad that raised me from when I was 12 years old till I was, graduated from high school. He passed away. All three of those people died of cancer. Okay, I don't wanna, one guy started being to me about the COVID. I said, "I don't wanna hear about the COVID. Why can't we cure cancer?" Because of the dollars, that's why. And I told everybody, "That's my opinion, and I'm gonna stick to it." Okay, couple things, I'd like to bring Rodney and Brad up. They, they've been my sidekicks in this deal for a long time. And then, she's works, come on up, and I'm gonna hand you an envelope. The, I was dropped a bombshell, and I think this needs to be told, talked about. The Hayden family has a new foundation, it's called the Hayden Freedom Foundation. Bob Hayden, Barbara Hayden, big corner pillar people in this community. I worked for them for 18 years. Great people to work for. I hated to retire. Every time I go in and visit them, they say, "When you coming back?" If I could go back and be safe at my job without being feared of falling into one of those headers, Mayor, you know what they are, they're sitting there banging all the time, I would. 'Cause I love my job and I love what I did for them. But they had promised me, as long as I'm doing this car show, we will get $5,000 a year from that foundation. It was pretty special, because they kinda explained to me how it works. Bobby, their son, their two daughters, Kathy and Sally, and Bob and Barbara, will sit down, they sit down, and they have cut back on their giving. They said, "The only way they're gonna give now is if you work." They will, "You gotta go out and earn it." And then, they're willing to donate to it. So Barbara has been a supporter of mine, they've been sponsoring my car since 1993, so that's where that relation goes. But I think, I think they need, you see them out there thanking, because I think that's pretty special for them to do that for this program. So we're $5,000 ahead already for next year. Everybody asks me if I always wanna raise $1 more than the year before, and I say, "No, I'm not Jerry Lewis." If I raise $1, I'm happy, because we're $1 ahead of where we're already at. But this year, it's my honor. Boy, this is tough, to be able to give you checks for $15,038.
Thank you, Bob. That was a self-choice. I picked the candy apple, we're out for three, and I had two vehicles right on the top of the list, Park Denny's and Mike McDermott's. And Bob said, "We better put it away." And I thought we just, thank you. Brenda, I talked to Brenda today, and she said, "I, she didn't like to make her presence." No. Oh, Roque, excuse me, what are you talking about? Please, Roque.
Lehman?
I'm here.
Oldham?
Here.
Dawson?
Here.
Bogus?
Here.
Richardson?
Here.
Cross?
Here.
Foster? Okay, absent. And Liz?
Here.
Now, on service award, I did talk to Brenda Audrey today, and she's dedicated, I don't know, she's a good one, I thought she was making here, but she's been with us five years. She is on, she's on, Brenda, what are you doing out there? She's not in town. Anyway, she's been with us five years, and she's had, we've had some major accomplishments, been a great five years, I've been with her for three, so hopefully, we'll be here another 50. Esther Schultz retired after 23 years. She would like it not to come tonight. Hopefully, we'll recognize her in the future, appreciate that, Esther. So we need approval of the previous session, council member, council, councilman minutes?
Motion to approve.
Second. All in favor?
I oppose.
And also with the Finance and Zoning Commission?
Motion to approve.
Second. All in favor?
I oppose.
Financial destruction, Andrew Dawson?
We have two items this evening. The first one is a records destruction request coming from the Finance Department. They have identified several records that have met the retention requirements and are asking for permission to destroy those.
Motion to approve this destruction.
Second. All in favor?
I oppose.
Thank you.
Second item is an ordinance which amends the job descriptions for Personnel Director and Personnel Specialist. That was identified when onboarding our new HR director.
Any council discussion? Harley, would you read the ordinance, please?
Bill number 2021-47, an ordinance replacing job titles, classifications, and descriptions within the Human Resources Department for the city of Today, Missouri.
Second reading.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
Bill number 2021-47, an ordinance replacing job titles, classifications, and descriptions within the Human Resources Department for the city of Today, Missouri.
Final passage.
Second. Roque, please.
Richardson? Cross?
Yes.
Foster is absent. Liz?
Yes.
Lehman?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
Dawson?
Yes.
And Bogus?
Yes.
Seven yes and one absent.
That's all I have, Your Honor.
Andrew, thank you. Service, how's it going?
Yes, we have one item for the Public Safety Committee tonight. Included in the budget was a replacement of two police patrol vehicles and one command truck. We sent out a request for proposal, and we got those bids back on April 1st, and the bids were awarded to Bryant Motors here in Sedalia. We purchased two Dodge, 2021 Dodge Durango's and one 2021 Dodge Ram in the amount of $94,559.
Any council members want to discuss?
Motion to approve the bid.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Officer, Jeff, please.
Your Honor, I have four items this evening. The first one being a contract extension for our rock salt for the winter timeframe. It's always that big to divide during this time of the year. For one, we don't have to worry about somebody else taking the supply. And number two, with the company that we are actually contracted to, we have the option to extend, and that option also gives us the fact that price stays the same, so, staff is recommending approval.
Council discussion? Read the ordinance, please, Harley.
Bill number 2021-48, an ordinance authorizing a one-year contract extension for transport and purchase of rock salt.
Second reading.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
Bill number 2021-48, an ordinance authorizing a one-year contract extension for transport and purchase of rock salt.
Final passage.
Second. Roque, please.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster is absent. Liz?
Yes.
Lehman?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
Dawson?
Yes.
Bogus?
Yes.
And Richardson?
Yes.
That's seven yes and one absent.
My second item this evening is kind of like a housekeeping thing. Along with the Hecker Community Center, we are obligated to build sidewalks around the building, and part of that has to run along Highway 65, as most governmental things, we have to agree between each other. So this is what, this is all about, is we're having an agreement with MoDat along the right-of-way for us to be able to put the sidewalks in place.
Any council discussion?
Well, I just, one thing, they said left or right on the editor's choice for which side of 65. They oughta say east or west. But, I don't think so. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Harley, would you read the ordinance, please?
Bill number 2021-49, an ordinance authorizing an agreement for sidewalk improvement.
Second reading.
Second. All in favor? Oppose?
Bill number 2021-49, an ordinance authorizing an agreement for sidewalk improvement.
Final passage.
Second. Roque, please.
Foster is absent. Liz?
Yes.
Lehman?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
Dawson?
Yes.
Bogus?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Seven yes and one absent.
My third item has to do with a change order, 3.1 to be exact, with Capital Railroad Contracting, with the construction of the railroad spur nearing its end, hopefully, soon. Because of the weather and other entities, if you recall way back when, they agreed to supply extra crew to catch up. That was done, and now we're another two weeks away from this, and we need to do an exchange, or change order to add $11,641.34 to that contract, and it's still within our budget to finish this.
Any council discussion? It is progressing quite a lot. It's not, it's already there, the new force switch is, it could be there very quickly.
I have not seen yet, but I've been watching for it.
Hopefully, we'll have some money left over to this, other projects in that rail spur race. So read the ordinance, please, Harley.
Bill number 2021-50, an ordinance authorizing change order number 3.1 for additional labor related to the rail spur.
Second reading.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
Bill number 2021-50, an ordinance authorizing change order number 3.1 for additional labor related to the rail spur.
Final passage.
Second. Roque, please.
Liz?
Yes.
Lehman?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
Dawson?
Yes.
Bogus? Richardson?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
And Foster is absent, so that's seven yes and one absent.
My last item has to do with another contract extension, and has to do with Hanson Tree Service. If you recall, in 2019, we went through a sealed bid process that allowed for us to contract with them, and what they do is they grind our tree limbs and stuff that we pull off in the streets from strong damage and other things that we take down, and they mix that with the sewer sludge, and that makes an excellent fertilizer, which we in turn resell to the community. This year, with that contract that we had in 2019, we had four year, one-year extensions available to us. We would like to extend that for this year, for fiscal year 2022, and it would be limited to our annual budget of $60,000.
Any council discussion?
I, I know, I was always understood that the compost wasn't the fertilizer. But I understand it is a fertilizer.
Yeah.
'Cause back years ago, I know, they, they definitely said it is not a fertilizer. So how is it?
Well, it has nutrients to the taste of, to the taste of the garden, does definitely have different.
Okay. Any other discussion? Harley, read the ordinance.
Bill number 2021-51, an ordinance authorizing a one-year contract extension for yard waste grinding.
Second. Second reading.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
Bill number 2021-51, an ordinance authorizing a one-year contract extension for yard waste grinding.
Final passage.
Second. Roque, please.
Lehman?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
Dawson?
Yes.
Bogus?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster is absent. And Liz?
Yes.
That's seven yes and one absent.
I was trying to fake yeah. Your Honor, that's all I have for this evening.
Thank you. Commander, Andrew Dawson?
We have three items on the agenda tonight. The first one is in relation to insurance proceeds in fire damaged buildings. The Community Development Committee identified some ambiguous language that was in our code of ordinances, and so what this ordinance does is it communicates clearly to the public what are the expectations of those, with the insurance proceeds in relation to fire damaged buildings.
Give us some examples of that.
Kelvin, would you like to give us some example?
Sure. Basically, the language, it was unclear that they actually had to clean up the property before the insurance proceeds would be, would be released, and so this just makes it clear that that is a condition of releasing the proceeds, that they have to show that the property was actually in, in lease service. Yes, yes, the building department will certify that, that the stipulation, or the conditions have been met.
So we do, saying, what, the insurance proceeds?
Yes, basically, by ordinance, the insurance company, if there's, I believe it's more 50% damage, then they have to send to the city 25% of the insurance proceeds. We put that in, essentially, in an escrow, interest-bearing escrow account. We keep track of that, and the community development, our seven departments, the building department, as soon as they, they have certified through finance that the conditions have been met, that finance will calculate the interest that was earned on it, and it's in the public.
Any other discussion? I guess close. Harley, read the ordinance, please.
Bill number 2021-52, an ordinance submitting Article 11 of the City Code regarding dangerous buildings.
Second reading.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Bill number 2021-52, an ordinance submitting Article 11 of the City Code regarding dangerous buildings.
Final passage.
Second. Roque, please.
Oldham?
Yes.
Dawson?
Yes.
Bogus?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Foster is absent. Liz?
Yes.
And Lehman?
Yes.
That's seven yes and one absent.
The next item I have is an ordinance accepting a quick claim deed for the property located at 604 West Main. I might recall we have it slated for demolition.
I think we did, we should have did that today.
No, actually, this was, this was one, this was the previous owner that we had received a week or two ago. But there is an update, Devon was able to get a hold, or somebody was, was able to get a hold of the mortgage holder on this property, and they have agreed to also give us a release, so that will give us a clear title. It was scheduled to, they were gonna start mobilization today on the demolition, so, so it's all coming together, so.
All the equipment that's on site, there you go. That's some passion for Steve. So, read the ordinance, please.
Bill number 2021-53, an ordinance approving the acceptance of a quick claim deed for property located at 604 West Main in the city of Today, Missouri.
Second reading.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
Bill number 2021-53, an ordinance approving the acceptance of a quick claim deed for property located at 604 West Main in the city of Today, Missouri.
Final passage.
Second. Roque, please. Ro, please.
Dawson?
Yes.
Bogus? Richardson? Cross? Foster is absent. Liz?
Yes.
Lehman?
Yes.
And Oldham?
Yes.
Seven yes and one absent.
Thank you.
Third item I have is a, uh, ordinance granting a change in zoning classification for twelve hundred East Sixth, and that's taking it from C one to, uh, R one, single-family residential. The planning and zoning recommends approve.
Any counsel discussion? Ro, please. Read your order.
Bill number twenty twenty-one dash fifty-four. An ordinance granting a change in zoning classification from C one, local business, to R one, single-family residence on certain property located at twelve hundred East Sixth Street in the city of Todaya, Missouri, in accordance to Chapter sixty-four zoning of the City Code of the city of Todaya, Missouri.
Second reading.
Second. All in favor? I oppose.
Bill number twenty twenty-one dash fifty-four. An ordinance granting a change in zoning classification from C one, local business, to R one, single-family residence on certain property located at twelve hundred East Sixth Street in the city of Todaya, Missouri, in accordance to Chapter sixty-four zoning of the City Code of the city of Todaya, Missouri.
Second reading. Final passage.
Yeah, Ro, please.
Just a second, that, please.
I have a second.
Thank you.
Bogus? Richardson? Cross? Foster is absent. Liz?
Yes.
Lehman?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
Dawson?
Yes.
That's seven yes and one absent.
That's all I have, Your Honor.
Liquor license, this is Harley, please.
Okay, all of these licenses are renewals this evening. John Swerentown doing business as J.A. Lamy Manufacturing at one oh eight West Pacific for a packaged liquor, Sunday sales and liquor by the drink. Henry Hatfield doing business as East Street Bar, twelve oh one East Third Street for liquor by the drink and Sunday sales. Daniel Scott Fox doing business as Smoker Friendly, seventeen hundred East Broadway for a packaged liquor and a Sunday sales license. Nan Deep Car doing business at Sedalia sixty-six, and one twenty East Sixteenth Street for packaged liquor and Sunday sales. And Lancy Urich doing business at Hampton Inn, thirty-nine oh nine West Ninth Street, packaged liquor, um, license.
Motion to approve and block.
All in favor? I oppose. Any counsel members who'd like to make a, any comments tonight?
Go out and vote tomorrow. I'm in a heated race with Nikki Mous, so. I'll write Nikki Mous in tomorrow.
Kelvin? All have Nikki's hair.
I write, I, I beat Nikki by two votes last time, so my fingers are crossed.
Anybody present, Your Honor, if you'd like to make a comment tonight?
Motion to move the post-door session?
Second. Ro, please.
Well, and we need to mention the sections that are involved.
Section one, legal advice, and section two, real estate, and twelve, negotiated contracts, according to section sixteen.
Thank you.
Ro, please.
Lehman?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
Dawson?
Yes.
Bogus? Richardson?
Yes.
Cross? Foster is absent, and Liz?
Yes.
Now, we're gonna start to go. It's that answer. Thanks, Kelvin, you saved me. We are gonna throw you into the mud.
I know, ask me questions about the ordinance I wrote down.
What you have, it's a tough one. Thank you. Burning down a pyramid.
This conference will now be recorded.
Lehman?
Here.
Oldham?
Here.
Dawson?
Here.
Bogus? Richardson? Cross? Foster is absent, and Liz?
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
What's that? Going back. Thank you.
Ouch. Yeah. You know, you've got a.
Best gallop you've ever done, nobody's here to hear it.
It's over.